Good afternoon and welcome to the thirteenth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your names for our court by permission reporter. If you're here to testify, please come forward, introduce yourself, spell your name, and be sworn in by Mr. Picaro. Commissioners, well commissioners, I see we have a some minutes to deal with.
Um yes Chair.
Um you can do that, I was gonna take it after we clear the.
That's okay.
Whatever you, whatever your fancy is.
Motion to approve the minutes. Regular minutes of the forty-first, ninth, tenth, and eleventh meetings and the executive session minutes of the forty-first, ninth, and tenth meetings as previously circulated.
Second. Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
The regular minutes of the forty-first, the ninth, the tenth, and the eleventh meetings and the executive session meetings of the forty-first, ninth, tenth are approved. Um I need a motion for the second request.
Uh motion to add on agenda item thirteen A, request number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-nine.
Second. Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Right? I vote aye, motion is carried. Can I have a uh motion for the executive session minutes of the thirty-sixth meeting?
Yes, motion to rescind the executive session minutes of the thirty-sixth meeting.
Second. Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion is carried. Let's move into the public hearing, agenda item number one. Transfer application number one-eight dash one-four-four-five-one. Please come, is that demand, come forward, introduce yourself. Please be seated.
Aloha, Cindy Kamau C I N D Y K A M A U.
Thank you. Um have you had an opportunity to read the investigator's report?
I did.
Do you have any changes?
No.
Thank you very much, Mr. Picaro.
State for the record that a summary of the August second twenty eighteen preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number one-eight dash one-four-four-five-one.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number one, transfer application number one-eight dash one-four-four-five-one is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number two, application number one-eight dash one-three-nine-four-three from Beach Dreams LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Anthony Soitsugu on behalf of Beach Dreams LLC. With me today is Scott Swartz, he's the general manager. Uh we have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, you gentlemen sitting next to you?
Scott Swartz, he's the general manager.
Thank you very much. Mr. Picaro.
I will state for the record that summary of the August second twenty eighteen preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. The applicant admits statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Picaro. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one-eight dash one-three-nine-four-two.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number two, application number one-eight dash one-three-nine-four-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you then, moving into the special license application. Agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-seven from Bamboo Catering Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, David Webb, authorized agent for Bamboo Catering Inc. Mr. Taki Mora could not be here today. Uh Webb is spelled W E B B.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
Mr. Webb, um can you walk us through your special event? This is for Saturday, October sixth.
Yes ma'am, that one is a first birthday party. And uh that is good, the event starts at five-thirty, it's a cash bar. And uh pretty much very simple. Very little bar sales for these kind of events, but the uh the uh Tatas always request to have their Heineken, so we have to have that.
And so because it's a first birthday party, we expect there's gonna be um all age range?
There'll be, there'll be a range of ages, we, we do check IDs, yes.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Webb, other than Heineken, what other liquor do you have?
We have a full bar, sir.
Explain what's the, what type of?
Uh we have beer, wine, and mixed drinks. Bourbon, scotch, vodka, brandy. But we sell predominantly beer, that, that type of event will be almost all beer.
Have, have you held events at this location?
Uh I've held events there for the last twelve years with another catering company, then just most recently with Mr. Taki Mora with Bamboo Catering for since, since April.
Thanks, thank you. Have you had any previous violations?
No, sir.
Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-seven.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-seven is approved. Good luck, happy birthday.
There were two more, two more licenses on that.
It's not moving.
Two, two more license application.
That's correct, you are not moving. Okay, so I assume you have agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-eight from Bamboo Catering Inc. Please introduce yourself again for the record.
Uh David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo, Bamboo Catering Inc.
Thank you, Commissioners?
And this event is for fundraiser, Mr. Webb?
Yes, this is actually the Filipino Community Center Board of Directors. They have an annual gala called the Bayamian Gala. And in years past, they always held it at the Sheraton or the Hilton or somewhere like that. And, and they paid a lot of money to do it, and finally they just, they decided, why don't we just do it at our own venue? And uh Chef Jason's gonna, came up with a great menu for them that was affordable. They should be able to raise a lot of money. They want to do predominantly bottles of wine, but I'm sure we'll also sell some by the glass.
So my question is this, are, is Bamboo Catering going to be the exclusive caterer for the Filipino?
We'd love for that to be, sir.
Oh okay, so they, they do not have a caterer at present time?
They do not have an exclusive caterer at the present time. They, they did previously, and during that time that the Philcom Center, they'd gone into bankruptcy, but the prior caterer whom I used to work for uh was kind of kicked out. So now it's uh Bamboo Catering does the majority of the catering, but there's L and L caterers and also I think Cools in catering. So it's, that's, it's, when people call, they, they give them the catering list.
Yes, I noticed Mr. Flores's name on the wall. Very good, okay Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-eight.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-eight is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-nine from Bamboo Catering Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering Inc.
Thank you, Commissioners?
And this is for a school fundraiser?
This is also a, a school, but it's the parents, so it's called Navy.
Imagine we're not serving alcohol to the kids, right?
Uh actually, they're gonna be off to the side in a separate room. They rented another room on the other side of the courtyard, and they'll be, uh they'll be provided, you know, like kiddie meals and kiddie drinks over there, stuff like that.
So this is mainly a fundraiser, mostly parents in attendance, and then supporters of the school?
I believe it's all parents, yeah.
Any questions, Commissioners? Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-nine.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-four-nine is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, sell them out. Calling agenda item number six, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-nine-seven from Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Anthony Soitsugu, member of Free Spirits. With me today is Matthew Choi, one of the managing members. And we have no changes to the investigative reports.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Oh yes, one question, um our map is kind of hard to read.
Looks like yes.
Is it?
I saw that, so I, I brought one, I can pass it around if you need to see it, but it's a beer garden area.
Probably needed them.
Well, my question is that, um is it gonna be inside, outside, um?
It's an outdoor space.
It's an outdoor space, pretty outdoors, that's gonna be, thanks.
Yes.
Okay.
This is a night event, correct?
Uh afternoon.
Night event.
So that's gonna look like it, night event, yeah.
Yeah. But we'll have some lights.
And this is for Oktoberfest?
Correct.
Have you folks held Oktoberfest in Kapolei before?
Not in Kapolei, this is the first one, but we just recently had one, um as the commission knows, at Bishop Museum, and that went without incident.
Without incident, okay.
Yes.
That's a one very well.
All right, any questions? Uh motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-nine-seven.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number six, application number one-nine dash one-five-zero-nine-seven is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven, applications, applications number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-three-one to one-five-two-two-three dash eleven inclusive. Good afternoon.
Hello. Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Robin Melch on behalf of the applicant, G K Hawaii Restaurant Inc. And to my right is Rick Nakashima, the Vice President of the Corporation, applicant. We have reviewed the report and we would like to request um an amendment to the dates. We would like to change the dates to October eighth, starting to October twenty-eighth inclusive.
Okay, we need to take thirteen eight seven? That's right. But separate. Take any first?
Yeah.
Maybe we should take it first.
Yeah. Just call two ten.
Ms. Melch, this is the rescind request that you requested and the add-on to the thirteenth.
Correct.
Can we take one agenda item at a time?
All right, we can do that. Um what we're gonna do is first, we're gonna approve your requests that are in agenda item seven, and then we'll move on to thirteen eight directly afterwards.
Okay.
So that we can do the date adjustment.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, so this one is for special licenses, and this is Yukaku Restaurant in Kalioni. Yep?
The, actually Kalioni.
And we're opening, yeah, opening in Kalioni.
It was Kalioni his license that we're gonna cater, but now it got converted to a special, so it's Kalioni.
Okay.
Yes, we continue this from last week.
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to approve application.
Okay, question, Ms. Melch, sorry about that. Ms. Melch, um you saw the investigative report for agenda seven? On page two, there's a hidden possible issue?
Correct, that was the catering issue, that's why we had to submit a special license.
Okay.
And this is the special license application.
Got it, okay, thank you for your time.
Uh motion to approve applications number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-three dash one through one-nine dash one-five-two-two-three dash one-one-eleven inclusive.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seven, applications number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-three dash one through one-nine dash one-five-two-two-three dash eleven are approved. Now let's move on to the add-on agenda item number thirteen A. Request number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-nine from Robin Melch, Esquire, on behalf of G K Hawaii Restaurants Inc.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Robin Melch on behalf of the applicant, and to my right is Rick Nakashima, the Vice President of the applicant.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
I have a question, actually on the request, this is special licenses are at threes. Do we have to amend any of the applications to do that, or? Or what was provided was a, a time duration from October eighth to October twenty?
Correct, so it's twenty-one days.
And each application is a series of three, right?
Correct.
So do we have to do anything to the applications or?
Uh I think we, you're, you're allowed to approve it. And, and they're doing uh based on the administration's request from last week.
Right.
So uh and that's why they have it, I guess, three at a, three at a time?
Right, so the request is to change the dates, but each application has a date assigned to it.
Correct, so when I submitted the special applications, I initially submitted for these dates. And then I submitted supplemental ones for the additional dates that.
Oh, you did, so, okay.
Correct, so it actually, my applications are.
Are corrected.
No, yeah, are, they are correct.
They are correct, okay.
Correct.
As you can see, we miss assistant administrator right.
We, we're just gonna accept in the application, sir.
Yeah, it has to be three at a time, so. So when you look at her date, she just got to do it.
And these are three, these are twenty-one, this is twenty-one days.
Except they're just a new application that we're submitting.
And the, the specials that I submitted, I submitted first for these dates, and then I added the other ones that I am now trying to.
Okay. Cause you're shortening your time, right?
I'm shortening the time, correct.
That is the request to.
It's perfect. Um anything further, Commissioners? Uh motion to approve request number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-nine.
Second. Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirteen A, request number one-nine dash one-five-two-two-nine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your cooperation. Thank you. Calling agenda item number eight. This is a preliminary hearing, application number one-nine dash one-four-seven-two-two from M N S. Good afternoon, Chair.
Hi, good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Paul Kosasa, K O S A S A, President and CEO of M N S L T D, uh doing business as A B C stores.
Very good, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-four-seven.
Second. Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eight, application number one-nine dash one-four-seven-two-two is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, a temporary license application, application number one-nine dash one-four-nine-six-four from Way and Sue Group.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, good to see you all again, and Commissioners. Uh James Lee, representing Way and Sue Group Inc., E B A Honolulu Secure House. See that to my right is Vice President of the Corporation, the Nian Chan Sai, last name T S A I. Uh we have no changes to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, Commissioners?
Uh motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-four-nine-six-one.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nine, application number one-nine dash one-four-nine-six-four is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number ten, this is a catering license application. Application number one-nine dash one-five-one-zero-two from I F R E N L L P.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, the President of the Commission. To my far left is Masati Sasada. And he's one of the holders, next to him is Ricky Kowen Ashu, Ricky without I. R I K I.
Yes.
And in record reflect Wayne Lucas Council. Uh we have read the investigative report, there are no changes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So Mr. Luke, this is for a special Halloween event?
That's correct.
It's noted here in the licensing investigative report that minors will be allowed as patrons.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and that the licensee is requesting wholesale liquor delivery to the catered site?
Yes.
Which is where?
It's the old Ninch.
Just in She.
Ninja Shushi site. That's on the uh Pequoy side of the.
In Olive One Shopping Center.
Yeah, in the shopping center.
It's near or the whole Jamba Juice or their Jamba.
Bread mix and Jamba Juice, exactly.
Right there, yeah. So e- uh explain to me what a special Halloween event is?
Um they actually had like an event last year, I think it was a Christmas bar that they put up in. It's similar to that, um we have a lot of decorations inside of the space where um I guess customers can come and take a look at the decorations. The way we have it set up is where, when you come into the, through the entrance, there's a cashier, and they go to the cashier, uh they order their food or drink, and then they can sit where they like in this, in the space.
So how will you control minors who consume alcohol?
So as far as the, um when you pay out the cashier, the cashier will check ID at the moment, will have a wristband for the twenty-one and over. As far as the um non-alcoholic beverages, we have a, a color-coded cup. So the alcohol will be uh in a clear cup, and then the uh non-alcoholic beverage will be in a colored cup. So we can cut on the differential if it's alcohol uh cup or the, yeah, non-alcoholic.
Would you have anybody observing?
Yeah, we're gonna have um staff on the floor, just walking around, talking to customers, yeah, table service, so.
Thank you.
And it's noted, it's also noted that you folks are not gonna be cooking food at, at the site?
No, so we're catering.
Where are the food coming from?
From the physical location of Ichiriki on Pequoy.
On Pequoy, so it's pretty close, right? Uh motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-one-zero-two.
Second. Move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number ten, application number one-nine dash one-five-one-zero-two is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into the request, agenda item number eleven, request number one-nine dash one-five-one-nine-nine from Group Company LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Naomi Call on behalf of Pyeongjigur. Present to my right is owner Darren, D A R Y N Oginno, O G I N O. Um we're here today, Commissioners, to ask for approval for pre-mixed drinks. I have to correct my letter, dated September fourteenth, I've only inadvertently listed nine, but there's actually thirteen uh drinks that we'd like to get approved. The thirteen drinks are actually listed in detail in the attached letter to you. Um that, actually that letter is to the um Food Permit of Sanitation Department. That letter is dated August fifteenth, and it does list out the thirteen pre-mixed drinks that we'd like to request approvals for. The letter itself goes into quite detail in terms of how it's made, the ingredients. Um it talks about the storage, the cleaning method. But to make it um easier and i- in general, the whole procedure is basically that they're gonna make it in small batches so that it's consumed within twenty-four hours. Um after consumption, it'll be cleaned within twenty-four hours. Um there's gonna be control methods in place to evidence that's all um documented. So when we make it, there's gonna be stickers, and the sticker picture is attached as an exhibit for you. So there's gonna be stickers attached to each drink, it shows when it's made and when it has to be used by. So that'll be on all of the pre-mixed drinks. And then as another control method in terms of the cleaning, it also attaches an exhibit, the cleaning log, which will show the day, the time, who cleaned it, and the manager who's supervising the cleaning. So we'll also have um control methods in place to make sure that everything is consumed and cleaned within twenty-four hours. So with every use, they're only open at night, so that means they're only gonna be making it, you know, that night, it'll be used by the end of the night. And if it's not consumed, then it's gonna be just stored away and disposed of. Um and then the uh the whole procedure was inspected by the food permit branch, they did give the green light and the thumbs up. And that's also evidenced by their email back to us. Um that is also attached here for your, as an exhibit for your review. And then lastly, I'd like to just kind of um let you know that if this is approved, we do have a menu that would be given to all of the cus- the customers. And the menu will have the list of all of the items, the ingredients for each drink, you know, so they'll know what the contents are of the drinks, and they're often knew the percentage alcohol of each drink that they'll be consuming. So everything is out in the open and um so they have, they could review it and read it before they place their order.
Thank you.
So with all of this um procedures, implementations, and control methods in place, we'd like to request for approval for these pre-mixed drinks.
Ms. Call, um I'll ask you the same question I've asked every um licensee that's requested this. As a, as a consumer, as a customer, how do I know that the premium alcohol that's being advertised or um offered for sale on your menu is the same alcohol that I'll be getting in my drink from these pre-mixed batches?
It's gonna be on the menu itself, so we did bring a pre-printed menu if you'd like to review.
What I'm, what I'm saying is how, how, how are you going to prevent fraud? How do I know that you folks did put in a cheaper brand of alcohol into the batch? Like that's the reason for this rule, is so that when you're a consumer, you could go to the bar and you can see what bottles the bartender is pulling, so you can be assured that what you're ordering is what you're actually getting. So how are you folks going to address that issue?
You know, I, I don't know how we can address that issue. I would assume they would have to just trust us, I mean, I don't know. If it's pre-made, they're not watching us batch the product itself.
If, if I came in and I asked for my drink to not be from a pre-mixed batch, but I wanted it made from scratch, is that, is that an option?
Yes, it's an option, they can go ahead and, we can make it right there, yeah.
And all of your bartenders are being trained to make these drinks on the spot, not just making the pre-mixed batch?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then if it is pre-mixed, the, you know, the representation is in writing as to what is actually gonna go into the drinks and what type of alcohol will be in the drinks. So it goes down to that specific level, so it's a written representation made to all of the customers, and it is in writing on the menu.
So let me ask this question. Turn them over to Irish whiskey. Do you have any cheaper whiskey on, in your inventory on your establishment?
Yes, we have a, a variety of whiskeys everywhere from Call to Premium.
That's a concern that I have. That concern would be, so if you put Call or the house whiskey into the drink?
Oh, but on the pre-mixed menu, we'll put the exact whiskey brand that's gonna be used.
But when it's mixed, is it exactly mixed with that brand of whiskey?
Yes.
Yes, for the pre-mix, cuz that's gonna be the exact brand that would be listed on the menu.
I would caution you folks to make sure that all of your bartenders understand this.
Yes.
That's why the rule was created, and that we're. Uh this is at the discretion of the commission, so you know, if if you folks don't take that responsibility to the consumer seriously. We can rescind an approval, and it may hurt other applicants that want to um do the same type of thing.
Yes, Commissioners.
Any other question?
Ms. Cole, you refer to your email attached to your letter from Brenda Okazaki.
Yes.
From Health, we don't have the date of the email on our document, the other day that she sent this email to you.
Um I have it on my phone, but it was.
Probably sometime after your letter.
It was sometime right before my letter to the Commission, because I was waiting for her green light approval before I could submit this um application.
Sometime after your August fifteen letter and before you submit your letter to the Commission.
Correct.
And I did not line it up closely, but on page two of your letter to the Commission, you have a summary of. The conditions one through seven, does that include the four bullet points on the Department of Health's conditions?
Um yes, some of the um items on Department of Health's condition, they went in and inspected everything, and they said everything looks completely fine, they gave the green pass light. And they also then sent this letter, some of what she stated is also in my bullet point, in my.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the Department of Health requirements aren't being incorporated by your Commission.
I'm sure it was.
I wanna make sure the Department of Health requirements in your mail are gonna be incorporated by your Commission.
Yes. Yes, it's it's in in place.
Anything further?
Yeah, I have a question, um your the preparation list and storage list is quite extensive depending on the type of beverage. Could you kind of go over um some are in a slushy machine, some are in Tigray, who's uh having better? Well, I guess with nitrogen or something, could you explain the whole process depending on which product it is, and some are stored in? It seems like there's a variety of storage options for depending on what's being.
Right, so the slushy machine uh will be batched only for the day. So at the end of the night, if there's anything left that will be disposed of. Um the slushy machine does have some dairy content, so the uh Department of Health did look over our model number and did. Uh approve showing that we can hold the temperature to what it needs to be for safe consumption. Um so as far as storage wise, after the end of the day, it will be it will be discarded. Um uh for the uh cocktail and draft, that will also be um pre-made. Prior to the day, there won't be any uh milk or dairy products in in those. Um and those are actually, I feel, uh more san- even much more sanitized because of the CO2 pressure being pushed into the the tank. It there's no opening or any contact uh and once it's once it's pre-made and whatnot. And the uh there's a bottled cocktail that we do have as well. The bottled cocktail, the the reason why we're we're putting it in a cocktail is more of a presentation purpose, as well as for uh efficiency of service. And a lot of our patrons um you know enjoy the the presentation. The the cocktail is pre-made, tapped, but and opened by the bartender, but the patron never touches the bottle, it goes right into a glass, and they enjoy it there. Um and there will be none left at the end of the evening. We've been in business for six years now, so we have a a great understanding of, you know, how many people come in. We under- we know when our busy nights are, we know when our slow nights are, we have a a lot of metrics to go up over the last six years. You know, to to make sure that we run out, because you know, the last thing we wanna do is throw throw away a product as well, so. We understand what we need to what we need to put out there.
Alright, motion to approve request number one nine dash one five one nine nine.
Second.
They're moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number eleven, question number one nine dash one five one nine nine is approved.
Can you give me the question?
Thank you, thank you.
On agenda item number twelve, Mr. Daniel Mavolo. On behalf of Best Barbecue Inc., doing business as Ricky's Barbecue Company.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Sweetman for Best Barbecue LLC, to my right is Daniel Mavolo. Um the uh managing member of the LLC. Uh we had an opportunity to review the um supplemental licensing investigative report, and uh and no changes. Just to summarize, what happened, Commissioners, is there is a uh. A new plan submitted when a door, so the the initial plan had a door in a spot that uh as they did the construction, they had decided. Not to put that door in, they just left the existing door where it was, which is what you see on exhibit A now. And um and so when we submitted that new floor plan, it it raised the question at that time. Also in the uh in the inspector's mind about the uh self-dispensing beer machine. And so uh he asked that we come in front of the Commission and answer any questions that you might have about that either of those things.
Uh why don't you walk us through um your self-service beer station or what?
Sure, so.
How does it work? I come in and what happens?
Um you go to the counter and I'll let I'll let um Danny speak up for me if I say anything wrong, or do you just wanna answer?
I I can answer, yeah, yes, so you could either order your food, it's like a um fast casual, kind of like Pan Express, you go through the line. And then you can order beer or just order the uh with the food, but we check your ID first, make sure you're twenty-one and over. And we swipe your credit card, open up your tab, and with that, we give you an RFID card and we put a wristband, kind of like the events here. Um from that, that RFID card, you can um go to the beer machine, there's a screen on the, like a walk-in cooler, the walls have the spouts, and also a screen there. With the RFID card, um you can pour up thirty-two ounces, we can stop them at any time if um you know, we feel like stopping them um. We're gonna have just the inside, they can drip just only on the inside where we can monitor them, and they'll be monitored, and is that not?
We train staff.
Yes, we have trained staff, we already had some staff trained, and then we were hiring one more already, um one person that already has a liquor card. So, yeah, we're excited, and it, but we um we can see it right there, we can see it being poured from wherever we are. So, yeah, we're gonna have also a employee monitoring the guest area, so.
And you said that the RFID chip is inside of a wristband?
Oh, no, 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 we're gonna give them a wristband, like a paper, like a wristband.
Yes, it's in a wristband.
No, uh RFID card, ma'am.
Oh.
Yes, RFID card.
So you have to have a card and a wristband?
We're gonna br- wristband, yeah, so we can identify.
Okay, so I cannot say, you know, I have my fifteen-year-old nephew with me, can I give him the card to go and get a beer?
No, uh we're we're gonna watch out for that, make sure nobody, make sure nobody, yeah. Also, when 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 they go to the beer dispensing station, which is, it's a little small restaurant.
Yeah.
We can really see everyone, um we can see who has the wristband first, and then we can can see them, um whoever's looking at um dispensing beer.
That's cause that's, you know, that's what we fear, is that.
Yes, ma'am.
Those harms are kind of a easy to pass around, yeah?
We'll make sure that. Mm-hmm, yes, so we'll we'll very, we'll monitor that very carefully.
That's so careful.
Let me ask you a different question on these of those RFID cards, so let's say um two adult patrons purchase their card, they get up to two drinks per person?
Oh, it's thirty-two ounces, sir.
Two, thirty-two ounces per person?
No, one thirty-two ounce per person.
Oh, one?
Per card, yeah.
The exhibit B two, number four says, the patrons have access to two drinks and beverage per person?
Oh, it's equivalent to, cuz sixteen ounce, uh glass sixteen ounces, so it would be equivalent to two glasses. If if they were to go to the limit, but we can stop it at any time, and they can stop at any time as well, we can cut off that card.
So. How would you ensure that one adult patron does not pass, using her card to another adult patron who consumes the thirty-two ounce?
Okay, so we're watching and we're monitoring, sir, uh we're having the wristbands to put on the um those that we check the IDs. And those that we will distribute the RFID card to them upon check-in, we'll dest- um put on the wristband and make sure anybody anybody who goes to the machine to dispense with. Will be wearing a wristband.
Understand that, but you're only monitoring the wristband visually, and make sure the person who's pouring, self-pouring is of age.
Yes, sir, and we're and uh.
My concern is overintoxication, because you lose the direct interaction with the bartender or waitress or waiter.
Oh, okay, so yeah, we'll we'll be going around.
But what you're doing is you're using the self-service and you take away that element of direct contact and communication. So how do you ensure that the person who's wristbanded is not on their second, third, fourth RFID card passed on by someone else?
Oh, they're limited to just thirty-two ounces per day, sir, with an RFID. Oh, it cuts, um they only can get one RFID card.
Yeah, I think you confused, but let me try, say he and I go, we're both over twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah.
He gets a card.
Yes.
I get a card.
Yes.
He doesn't wanna drink, he gives me his card, now I can get four.
Uh-huh.
So how are you gonna prevent that?
Oh, we're monitoring, we're we're checking everything.
So it's just about watching, watching to make sure how many times people go up?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, we're monitoring very carefully, that's something we're really gonna monitor. Uh and we're gonna, they check in too, so we take their credit card, and we can stop at any time, that that um that pad that we got there. Um can we can stop at any time, so if we saw that they're already cheating the system, we can stop at any time. We can cut that card anytime before they even reach thirty-two, we can cut off all the cards.
That's my concern, right?
Yes, sir.
You lose that human element of the ability to identify dish of intoxication.
Mm-hmm.
And it's visual monitoring of the person swiping.
Yes, sir.
And as vice chair means hypothetical, there could be instances where someone uses another card.
Yes.
And I mean, I mean, that's important for you folks, if we allow this to be vigilant and make sure this doesn't.
Yes, there's definitely, we'll be very vigilant, John, uh Commissioner, and we'll have someone uh checking at all times.
One thing I can suggest that we can do to mitigate your concerns is um. Uh we can train the staff, and we can put policies in place um that will ensure that the staff are not only monitoring to make sure that the wristband control measure is being enforced. But that they're also interacting like a waiter or waitress might with the tables when they go to the, when they go to either bus the table. Or just in general, as the manager interacts with customers to see how they're enjoying their meal, they can still have that contact um with each individual customer to make sure that they are. To make sure that they are able to to see those indication in in dish of um intoxication. And we can put that in in a written security planner and written um policy, and then train the employees on that in addition to the um the rules and laws of the Commission.
I think that's a good idea, and I appreciate the suggestion and encourage you to do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So my question is, let's get away from the high-tech stuff, oh I'm in there with my twenty-year-old youngest granddaughter. How are you gonna monitor when I come back with a cup of alcohol? Of allowing her to drink out of my cup?
Yeah, I think that's a challenge in in any restaurant setting.
That's my concern.
Yes.
That's very possible to happen.
It is possible, and it's it's um of course a very valid concern, I think that's a challenge in in the restaurant setting um as always. And it will, in 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 a normal restaurant setting, you have that that waiter or waitress interacting as well as the manager interacting. And so I think our response is similar um to your concerns, um um, Mr. Chair, that. You know, we'll have to put procedures in place based on the concerns that you're voicing here, we'll have to put procedures in place to make sure. That we don't lose that contact with the individual patron, um and that we're and that we're monitoring in the sense, not only of the wristband control measure, but that we're monitoring individual patrons. Just as if um they were going back to the kitchen, grabbing two bottles of beer and serving to to the table, we'll have to make sure that we are. When we have sufficient staff to to maintain that level of contact.
Thank you, those are um good points that you bring up, and we look forward to you guys implementing them. Perhaps um providing our administration with a copy of your updated safety.
We'd be happy, we have a safety plan in place, and I think what, based on this discussion, what we'll do is put a a policy in place that we train all the employees on. Um and then we'll provide that to the to the Commission, if you'd like me to accept. Um do we provide that to the investigator, Mr. Chairperson, just in a letter to the Commission?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Before I make the motion, I would just like to say there's really no substitute for it, Kachi and Jesse Boy, who takes their responsibility seriously.
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh motion to approve uh request, agenda item twelve from Mr. Daniel Mavolo Junior.
Second.
They're moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number twelve is approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh calling um agenda item number thirteen, um this is a uh report from Arts Culture Merchants, a sector of mystery.
Good afternoon, Commission, Nicole Reed, N I C O L E, last name R E I D for the Arts Culture Merchants et cetera. To my report, I did wanna clarify, there was one typo on the second page, it says for November, I meant October. So I apologize, but that's the wrong typo.
Thank you for the detailed report from.
Yes, not a problem.
For turning into the. Was is there anything, were there any incidents that you would like to note, or anything um that you would like to point out to the Commission?
There was one incident after the event closed, after the bars had shut down, which was at about two fifteen. Two men that were friends started to wrestle, I don't know, because I'm not an inebriated man, but apparently it all, it extended into.
I had a roommate, I know.
A a little bit of a of a issue more than just a tussle, the good news is they did it on top of the sergeant's police car. So it was quickly taken care of without any issue, but um that was not tied to specifically the special license. But for the entire event with our special duty that we're on staff for that timeframe, that was the one thing that they reported to me. Um at the end of the night, we uh did our best, and I know we were visited um by the investigators. To uh manage keeping everybody's premises neat and tidy, meaning making sure patrons were not bleeding the lines over with beverages. Making sure people were staying inside that had purchased it outside. Um and I was in conversation with the investigators throughout, so as far as I know, to the best of my knowledge, uh everything was alright. The only thing that um we wanted to change was the music. We uh entertained a a band called The Two Sooners, which was a rock throwback group, but it was much too loud and much too heavy of a sound. For what we're trying to go for, so we're gonna go back to pow-hana, reggae, Hawaiian, local. So that it's not um, we don't try to impede anymore than we already are, so that was the only change that we kind of learned from that event. In that band.
Are you aware of any complaints from the public that may have happened?
I pulled the RFI, um so I'll know once I get that information, but as of right now, no.
That you haven't complained.
And DTS hasn't told me of any that they've received.
So let me just make a comment, perhaps if the event ended at that time, those two gentlemen would have been wrestling in the police car.
I think if the bars didn't serve till two, then those two gentlemen probably would wouldn't have been on the police car. But um I'm not sure, it could have been from from that, I I'm I'm unsure, but it was at two fifteen AM, I think, two two ten.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Was there um, see that you estimated serving about two hundred and one patrons?
Mm-hmm.
Were you able to determine from eight to eleven, eight o'clock PM to eleven o'clock PM, whether the size of the group was constant? Whether it increased or decreased at any point in time?
The size of the crowd was consistent from ten to eleven PM. We didn't see any kind of a surge because we were serving. Um it was, I was there the whole night, and the flow of people was, I would say, a little more than the month before overall. But not specifically for that one hour. Um we did sell through for the first time, the, I believe we purchased two half kegs, and we sold through those. So that was the first time that we could see uh more service or more sales. But we didn't see a significant increase um in that last hour, so.
Do we have an enforcement?
Acting Supervising Investigators, cooperation and enforcement. So we did have all of our enforcement investigators through, have from twenty-one hundred till nine PM till after midnight. So to monitor the. So to monitor the entire event, there was no violations observed, no citations issued. All my investigators were able to get that. Alcohol sales did conclude at twenty-three hundred eleven o'clock PM. Um, and throughout the night, the complaint hotline was monitored closely by my night supervisor, which there is no noise complaints registered within that area during the time of the event.
Okay, no action issue required on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, thank you.
Can I have a type of action uh for agenda items number fourteen to eighteen, please?
Yes, uh motion to the adoption of decision in order for agenda items fourteen through eighteen inclusive.
Second. They're second. All of them favor? I I vote uh agenda items number fourteen to eighteen of. Moving into the adjudication.
Good afternoon, Chair Chairman, members of the commission, Deputy Preparation Counsel, Chief Datta.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number nineteen, club five O.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. To my right is Keia Sato, sole uh officer and director of the licensee. We waive reading the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second. We move to second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nineteen, no contest, plea is accepted.
This is a first offense recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars.
Uh, my clients talked to the employee cons to them not to do this in the future. And this is the first violation I think of any type my client.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second. Moving second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number nineteen, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty, club five O.
Again, uh Keith, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. To my right is Keia Sato. She's the sole officer and director of the licensee. Waive reading of the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second. They're moved in second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a, oh, I'm sorry. This is a first offense recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
This is this is one of those rules I got a little bit of a problem with. It the rule, I read it carefully before I came in, requires full legal name. So in this case, the employee's name was Wu Ren Seo and the name Ren was printed on the time card. So there was a name on the time card, but you know, that's what the rule states. I you know, my my view is five hundred dollars versus, you know, the other one was the.
The rule is the rule.
I know, I understand. I understand that. I understand that, but that's the slip.
A lot of Joes and Moes out there.
Yeah, I understand.
Which one is on duty?
Yeah, I understand that. I and I understand the reason for the rule, but nevertheless.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second. Moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I I vote uh agenda item number twenty, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number yeah, twenty-one, Club Secret.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairmembers of the commission. Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. To my right is Tui Fong, uh last name P H U O N G. She goes by Tracy. She's the manager of Club Secret. We waive reading the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second. They're moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
This this is a second offense recommended fine is one thousand dollars. Just for the commission's um just for the commission's knowledge, the first violation of this type occurred in two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, she hasn't had a violation of this type for four years. This occurred when uh Tracy, who generally is there most of the time, wasn't on the premises at the time. So uh she's talked to the employee as well. But um it was a long period of time that there's been no violation.
Well, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second. They're moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty-one, Club Secret, the uh recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Club Secret.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. To my right is Tui Fong. She's the manager of uh the licensee. Waiving of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second. They're moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
This, oh, I'm sorry, this is a first offense recommended fine, I'm sorry, is two hundred fifty dollars.
Uh, employees should clearly be clocking out. And that's kind of what happened, they didn't clock out properly. So she's talked to the employees.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second. They're moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I I vote uh agenda item number twenty-two, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, lap lounge.
Uh, good afternoon again, Mr. Chairmembers of the commission. Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. I would ask that this matter be continued to either November first or November eighth.
What's your reason for the continuing, Mr. Kyuichi?
Uh, we're moving this off after a uh argument before the circuit court on the license revocation. That's the reason.
And um you request that I'm sorry, November eleventh?
November first or eighth, whatever is available.
This, yes, this is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, hope you have any objections?
There's no objection. Mr. Kyuichi and I had discussed this previously. Um, the oral argument is set for October fifth. But the reason now we're asking to move it further is that I'm scheduled to be in a trial starting on October fifteenth. That will take a few weeks.
So Mo- November eighth looks like a good date.
November eighth, fine, cause cause one of the pros, we don't know when Judge Hiroka is gonna make his decision after the argument on the fifth, so.
Yes.
That gives us, that gives us, yeah.
Is okay for both of you?
Yes, thank you very much.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-three, lap lounge to November eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. They're moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I I vote uh agenda item number twenty-three is continued to November eighth, two thousand eighteen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Calling agenda item number twenty-four, lap lounge.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairmembers of the commission. Keith Kyuichi for the licensee. Uh, we ask that this matter also be continued to November eighth for the same reason.
No objection. Okay, motion to continue agenda item twenty-four, lap lounge to November eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. They're moving second. All of them favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty-four is continued to November eighth, two thousand eight.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-five. Um, do we have any administrative matters?